It's 3 o'clock. I hereby call this workshop to order and we'll get right down to business. Bob Kurnow?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor Council. I'd like to bring up our Planning Director, Robert Caillou, to give us a presentation on short-term rentals.
Good afternoon. This is our second workshop on this item. The last one was held, I guess, about May's, uh, last May. And so what I have done is I have read over the notes from that meeting as well as reviewed the actual recording of the meeting.
I'm gonna interrupt.
Yes, sir.
When we talked about the other day in the meeting, we really haven't had a formal vote to say who's in favor on council of having short-term rentals. So, uh, we have not formally voted on that, so...
Alright, that's fair. At the current time, we have short-term rentals in Peachtree City, but they are currently unregulated. We do not disallow them. So if you want to make a motion, tell us what you have on mind and you can make a motion if that's what you want to do to start this off.
Okay, thanks, Robyn. And I don't, again, I didn't mean to interrupt, but rather than getting too far down the road, uh, I'd like to make a motion that we ban short-term rentals.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before we take a vote?
I think it deserves discussion to have that. I mean, there's precedent in...
Councilman, I apologize if you can speak into the microphone, thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I think it deserves discussion. And I know that I've read a lot in the last week or two, and there's actually Georgia law that allows for that to happen. I, I don't, I've given Phil the copy that I had that has several Georgia law, we don't have our attorney here, but there's Georgia law that allows for that to happen. And you might want to cite some of those if you want later on, Phil, but, um, there's two at least Georgia law that talk about allowing that to happen and why it, one of them failed, but it failed with a margin that will probably not allow it to come back into court. And the other one was right here in Peachtree, well, right here, associated near Peachtree City. So, you know, I just think there's precedent for it. I don't know how it would ever go through the, through us for doing it, but there is precedent.
Are you saying there's precedent for disallowing or there's precedent for lawsuits related to disallowing?
There's precedent for allowing it, not banning. You can ban it, and if you go to court, there's precedent that you would probably win.
Okay. Um, at this, at this time, if I may, um, at this time, I want to start my comments with full disclosure. Before we vote, um, I want to start my comments with full disclosure. Um, I own, um, a rental property in another state, in the state of Michigan. My son and his wife live in the Detroit area. And to go up and visit their growing family means my husband and I bought, uh, a house in a residential neighborhood, little brick bungalow, three-bedroom, one-bath, again, very quiet suburban house. And when we visit in Michigan, we stay in the house, and when we're not there, we Airbnb it out. So, uh, in the, in the less than year that I've been Airbnb-ing out, I, I just want it clear that I am an owner and I feel like I have firsthand information on what the potential benefits can be. Um, for example, I went back and looked at the people who have stayed. These are actual guest requests in the property that I own. Uh, for example, "My house is under renovation and the family and I need a place to stay as we start the school year off on the right foot." Here's another one. "My name is Jasmine..."
Would you stay 30 days?
Uh, "Less than 30 days. Uh, 'My name is Jasmine and I'm a medical student who will be doing a rotation in Detroit next month, is the unit near downtown. I will be traveling with my son to watch her son play in the finals for the Michigan Stars Soccer Club. It's his first year in the club. We are so excited. Your place looks lovely and we hope we can stay." Here's another one. "We've recently relocated to the area and have a buffer before our home is complete. We look forward to staying." I have several of those. "We're, we're buying a house in the area and would like to stay while we house hunt." On and on and on. People come in when they have an emergency, home renos, flooding, power outages. And I believe that what we're providing with short-term rentals with the proper restrictions, permits, and regulations is actually an important service to the city. I also, because I own a house that isn't where I live, I hire local people to do the housekeeping. I hire local people to shovel snow in Michigan and to mow the lawn. I hire the local 15-year-old kid to come out every Wednesday and roll the trash can down to the curb, and then he comes back again on Thursday to roll it back up. Um, I have not had any problems, thefts, vandalism, complaints from neighbors who I made sure to get to know. Um, I, I just want to put it out there that I think we have short-term rentals in Peachtree City right now. Um, I think they provide a valuable and needed service to our community. And, uh, just to kick this off, those would be my comments, that I think we would be better off, instead of banning them outright, I think we would be better off having a healthy discussion about what appropriate regulation looks like.
And I don't disagree with you, Mayor.
Okay.
I'm just saying that there's, it's one thing for you to purchase, and we've seen all kinds of emails, as all of us know, where somebody gets, wants to buy a house and they need some help. So they have an opportunity because of the way the house is set up with a back door or an opportunity to put somebody in their basement. And that's great when they want to get some supplemental income to help them pay their mortgage. But then they go from, and I've seen the same email that said it worked out so good that they were able to buy a second home or a third home. That's a little more than just a short-term rental. I mean, that's a short-term rental times three, becomes a business. So we do need to have some regulations about business.
Definitely.
So I would say that that's, that's fine. I don't disagree with you that people can, should be able to do that with their property.
Thank you.
I think that when it gets more than that, we need to have regulations to it.
I think we should talk about those regulations today, as a matter of fact. They're important. Did you want to make any comments?
The comment I would make is just outright banning them, uh, is not being very representative to the short-term rental owners that we currently have in the city. And we're not, you know, I don't know how many they are. It could be five, it could be 505. I just don't know. And I don't think any of us on this dice know exactly how many we have. But they are representatives and they are citizens that, that own their property. And the prop, and as a property owner, I feel compelled to, to kind of side with, with a property owner. And for those reasons, I guess more than anything else, just outright banning is doing a disservice and sort to, to the folks that we have using them as STRs now, and is really kind of taking an easy way out, which is why I would opt to go with what was said on this dice probably two and a half, three years ago. You know, we have them, we haven't regulated them, we need to, and we can make them safe. So, you know, that's where I am.
Okay. I, I, go ahead, do one more comment.
Yeah, no, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't made any comments. So right now, Peachtree City, so everybody knows, is 25% rentals. Okay? Is that right, Robyn? Okay, so we're 25% rentals. And, and Atlanta is 58%. That's a 17% difference. So I, I guess I'm asking everybody up here, are we okay with trying to, to make it where, uh, we have more rentals? I mean, that's, that's what this turns into is, and these are just rentals, these are like, like full rentals. We're not talking about the fact that when somebody gets a house and they can take and, and Airbnb it, the value of it, now it goes away from being a, a personal residence where somebody's, a family's living or whomever's living there to, it's a hotel. It is a flat, it's, it's flat-out a hotel. And in my neighborhood, my neighbors have come to me at a house that it was actually owned or occupied, the guy living there was grooming underage kids. And this was like when, when, when the person owned it. That he's moved on, a person bought it, and now it's an Airbnb. And now those same neighbors, they don't know who's in there. And so that's how come, people have come to me and said, "You know what? We don't want to live next door to a hotel where we don't, we do not know who's in there." Uh, again, I look at the percent of, uh, the, the 75, 25. Uh, right now, there is an issue, that'll, it'll drive up the, the value of homes because now people are making lots of money on their homes, right? It, it'll drive up... Well, I, I'm, you know, if people aren't, well, I'm, I'm sorry you're not. Most people in Airbnb do it so they can supplement their income. That drives up the value of the house, which drives out the young families that maybe want to move here. They can't get, they can't afford the houses hardly anyhow, and now we're increasing the prices of the houses. And in a nutshell, that's how come, uh, I've gone towards, yeah, I don't want them at all. And I understand if I'm the minority here.
That's alright. Um, I have one question. I thought we had 1,760 rental units in Peachtree City out of 12,600 households. That's closer to 14 or 15 percent.
Go ahead and give the information, Robyn.
So the census tracks how many rentals are in the property, and so it can, it's a combination of any housing unit that is rented. So a part of that 25% is the apartment units in the city. But obviously, there are more rented than we have apartments, and there are single-family homes that are rented. Yes, Mayor?
Gotcha. Thank you. Clint?
Yes, I have some comments, Mayor. Obviously, we want to protect the rights of the property owners. I'm one of the property owners here in the city. And, but I am, like Phil, I don't like the idea that I've got somebody moving in on a daily, sometimes a daily basis to my next door. Not saying that it's going to happen, but that's the potential if that end up, ends up going in this direction of short-term rental. I also believe that we've basically displaced houses out of the reach of new families coming into this city because we've now raised the price of these things. They're now investment properties, and they're, they're out of the touch of a new family coming in that want to bring their kids in and make this a family home and get their kids educated here. It's called displacement in the industry, and I don't want to see that here in Peachtree City. But I will tell you that I really don't like to have investors coming into our city. And I know, and I don't mean that across the board, but for housing, because they typically don't have the same values that residents have that live here and make it their home. I mean, someone that comes in for 20 days or three weeks, they have the same values that you have in, in the city? And they may or may not, is the answer. And, um, so I don't, I don't particularly like it because their look is they're looking for ROI. They're not looking for, you know, uh, for a family values neighborhood. And quite honestly, is that what the integrity of the neighborhood is? Should we just be a residential rental place where we rent these things out? No. I bought in here because I wanted my family to be in here. I didn't want to come in here and have, have somebody rent out the next door. Certainly, I did not like that. Um, that's why we have hotels. That's why we have hotels. They can go rent for a week if they want to go rent for a week. They want to rent for a month, they can rent for a month. They can actually stay in a very nice place here in Peachtree City. We have good hotels here in Peachtree City. We need to support those hotels. They're businesses here. But at the same time, I'm not foolish about this. I know that there's some property rights. I understand that. And although I seconded that motion, and I really don't want to have, uh, short-term rentals here in the city, if I can't get it passed, I will go for tight regulations on Peachtree, in Peachtree City for short-term rentals. And kind of that's, that's where I stand. And that, and the legal side of this, I know Frank brought it up and so did Phil, um, we need to get a good understanding of the regulations that are legal in the state of Georgia. What is a residence? What is a short-term rental? What is the length of that? What does the law say? Does the law say at least 30 days? Does it say less than 30 days? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer. But those are the kinds of things that I'd like to get a grasp on before we move forward on anything like this.
Sir, excuse me, sir. Excuse me. Excuse me, Mr. Dufrain. Absolutely not. I have a motion and a second on the floor, and the motion is to completely disallow short-term rentals in Peachtree City. All in favor of the disallowance, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no.
No.
No. Motion, uh, is, uh, does not carry on a two to three vote. Thank you. Now we can discuss, uh, short-term rental ordinance and go through the details. And just so everybody knows, we have a list up here. I guess maybe you don't have that list, but it, one by one reflects what we decided we wanted in a previous workshop. And so staff has done their diligence and brought it back to us, and one by one, we're going to tick through probably, um, after the presentation, tick through what we want a responsible ordinance to look like. Robyn?
So in the same way that, um, we normally do the legal with the red line, I have done the same with the PowerPoint presentation. So I took the presentation from our last workshop, and any changes, you will see crossed out or added are in red. First, there, we would still require a permit, and no detached structures would be permitted to be used for short-term rentals, and no RVs would be permitted to be used for short-term rentals. We did add a maximum number that would be permitted in the city of 5%. Um, there is, we did some re-
What is that number, Robert, in numbers of houses?
This would be-
Or rental apartments?
It's actually, so the, this is based on the tax assessors, uh, report to, digest report to us. And they report how many residential properties, so single-family residential properties, that they tax, um, in the city. Um, and that is in the realm of, I didn't get the exact number, uh, but about 12,600. And so 5% of that is around 630.
Correct. Thank you.
Robyn?
Yes, sir.
Are you talking about section 9, 917.5 permit required?
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
Let's let her get through her presentation, and we'll cover all these spaces.
Okay, because there's, I have a comment about that particular-
Let's, let's let her get through her presentation.
Okay. Um, so this 5% is based on some research we've done in the state of Georgia. There are other communities that have adopted this particular number, and it has, uh, stood the test in Georgia courts. And then we also added the requirement for not allowing subleasing of short-term rentals. That was a concern. These items remain the same. We'll still require that all parking is off-street and on paved surfaces, that all garbage is screened from view from the public road, that only a bedroom, as defined by the International Building Code, can be used for sleeping, and that there would be a maximum of three persons per bedroom. We still kept the requirement that no special events or parties would be permitted at a short-term rental, and that all the city's noise and parking requirements would have to be posted on the site, so there's no excuse for not knowing this requirement. We removed the requirement that the, um, short-term rental property owners would be required to keep a guest register of names, phone numbers, and make-model license plates of vehicles. But we kept the requirement of posting the phone number of that local contact person. And that local contact person must be 21 years of older, must be, um, able to respond to calls 24 hours a day, and be on-site within one hour. The application requirements, we kept the fire marshal inspection, the code enforcement slash building code inspection. We kept the requirement that they must pay local lodging tax, but we removed the requirement that an occupational certificate would be required for each property. These were the items that the fire marshal mentioned at our last meeting that he would look for in the property. They, we would have a checklist, an inspection checklist, that anybody would have access to so they know what would be expected during their, his inspection, including fire extinguishers that had been, um, inspected on an annual basis, intercoated smoke alarms, carbon monoxide alarms when there are, um, gas burning appliances or fireplaces. Um, he would look for safe outdoor cooking procedures where grills are located, uh, make sure that there were safe means of egress, and certainly that, uh, extension cords would not be used for permanent wiring in any case, since this is a high cause of fires in the city, Peachtree City. The code enforcement inspection would be looking at if there were pools on the property, that those pool barriers and hot tubs met the, uh, current pool requirements, fences and whatnot. This is where that inspection of a bedroom would go, uh, would occur, and he or she would establish the maximum overnight occupancy of the property as part of that permit. It would make sure that there was adequate paved parking on the site and that the storage of garbage, um, met the requirements, that house numbers were posted, as well as all short-term, um, rental requirements would be posted. And he or she would be looking to make sure that basic property maintenance code, handrails were safe, paint wasn't peeling, those types of things. As far as property owners of these, we would do a background check on them to make sure that they were felony-free for five years, and two years municipal conviction-free except for traffic tickets, um, or any kind of, um, citation or conviction of moral turpitude. And then we would mail that local, that 20, that local contact person, we would mail their contact information to every residence within 500 feet. And when, or if that contact person ever changes, we would be required to re-mail the, um, contact information to every residence within 500 feet. As far as enforcement, we, um, we are still keeping that three-strike policy, but that first citation was increased to the maximum, which is $1,000. And, um, since we're no longer requiring the occupational tax, that third strike still would have the ticket, the $1,000 fine, but they would be, they would revoke their short-term rental permit for 24 months, and they would not be applied, be able to apply for any new permits within the city for 24 months. So those were the, um, the changes that we made. This, I, I noticed at the last meeting that, that worked very well, having this checklist to kind of go through and get some verbal agreements on it. And so I have updated it with the new revised ordinance requirements. If you wanted to, uh, kind of go through those, staff found that very helpful.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think so too. Um, I think that's a good idea. And again, as we kick this off and we'll be going through this list, I, I, I will point out, I can't help but draw on my own firsthand experience, even though it was in another state. And that is, when we wanted to get a permit to, uh, short-term rental our house, uh, we went online through the city, filled out a form, paid $125, that's for two years. An inspector did come out, walked the periphery exterior, and then signed off on the permit. Uh, that's, that's how it works in Michigan. That seems to be working well where I have a property. Um, I believe that owners like me have a vested interest in making absolutely sure their property is clean and safe and, and appealing, and, and that the free market takes care of itself in that regard. Um, Peachtree City has on the books noise ordinances, nuisance ordinances, parking requirements, and I believe with enforcement of the ordinances that we already have on the books, plus reasonable ordinances here for short-term rental, I think we can allow for short-term rentals and keep everyone safe without overregulation. So with that in mind, let's just go through the list.
I, I have something that's not on the list, just, uh, just a question. Um, how many, I know you said three people per bedroom, but how many families per house, per night?
So, we have been advised by legal to not try to define what a family is because that is mean different-
Okay, how many different contracts?
Oh, I see. So, um, one of the international, okay. So we're not specifying whether or not they can rent out individual rooms to different people. So what you're saying is, let's say they had a basement and they had two bedrooms, and, um, would they be allowed to rent out bedroom A to one person and bedroom B to a different person? But the code enforcement inspection would make sure that there are no exterior locks on interior doors. And so they would not be able to provide a lockable pla, uh, bedroom to different renters. It's, it doesn't address the exact issue that you're talking about, but it, it is-
So if somebody had like four bedrooms upstairs and two bedrooms downstairs, uh, but they couldn't put exterior locks on those doors, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So maybe they divided four in two?
That, that's, yeah, you can't have, it's, it's against fire code to have exterior locks on interior doors. That's why your bathrooms have just those little pop locks instead of the twist anyway.
But if they, I guess if they added a door, though, going out, then they-
Yes.
Could at that point, right? I mean, theory. So, okay, I understand. I mean, uh, most of the homes Peachtree City, you know, two stories are rants, they probably have two or three egresses and two or three, I call them families, I'll call them contracts. Okay, thank you.
Alright, you ready to go through the list?
I have a couple of questions that I don't know where they fall on that list.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I was asking on 917.5, we were talking about permit required. You know, notwithstanding the mayor's lovely home in Michigan, you know, we're a lot closer to Atlanta, and we've got problems in College Park and other places that we know have drug problems associated with short-term rentals. And one of the things that's come up a number of times is that we shouldn't have corporations purchasing multiple houses. Because when they start, corporations start purchasing these, and then they rent them out as short-term rentals. And one of the statements here says that an officer in the case of the corporation can be one of the points of contact. I don't want to see any corporations own any houses for short-term rentals. So I think we should ban corporations from owning short-term rentals. It, it continues with, what the mayor wants to have is people that want to supplement their mortgage, that's fine. People that want to do things around their houses, that's good. But it shouldn't be a corporation buying two or three houses and then start to use them as short-term rentals. So I think we should take out corporations under that paragraph.
Is that even legal?
So Mayor, I would say that if you're going to entertain things along those lines, what we would do is staff would go back and we would consult with our attorney, and we would find out exactly what makes sense when it comes to that.
Thank you.
That, that was the point I wanted to make. I don't, if you, if you're going to allow STRs, you cannot, in my mind, deny anyone or any en- entity, if you will, to buy a home and, and exercise that right.
I'd like to have that checked.
Well, I understand what you'd like, but I want to make sure it's legal.
I've, I agree with you, Mike. I'm just telling you that there are places in College Park where they can't do that. That's part of what they put in there.
They've got enforcement issues in College Park right now, but I digress. Um, actually, the whole point of having someone physically here, 21 years old or older, uh, within an hour's notice is intended to make sure we have a physical local contact, correct?
Right.
So, would that person be considered a, uh, a property manager?
It could be.
And then if they're a property manager, do they have to be, have their real estate license to be a property manager in Georgia?
Uh, no, sir. You, I mean, you have, there are license requirements for property managers, but we would not, um, as far as, it, you could assign a property manager, you could assign your son, you could assign an agent who just does, is just this local contact and not necessarily a property manager. We would allow any of those situations.
Okay. We'll get a legal opinion on that, right?
And for clarification, are you- And for clarification, are you, corporations, limited partnerships, LLCs, you want to ban all of those types of ownership?
Yes. If we're, if we're supposed to be allowing new owners to supplement their mortgage payments by getting some rent from these short-term rentals, that's not a corporation. I know in College Park, they've got one place that's got, one corporation has five homes. To me, that's not a short-term rental, that you're going to supplement your income.
That's an investor.
We can have that conversation, but people sometimes get, make an LLC for an added level of protection insurance-wise or what have you, so that's going to be a very dicey area, Frank. Yeah. All right, any other questions, Frank, before we go through this list?
No.
All right. So the first ordinance standard that we're having, see now, grandfather's existing short-term rentals, no. All must apply within 30 days of adoption of the ordinance. So nobody would be grandfathered. All the STRs in Peachtree City would be required to adhere to these ordinances. Permit required, yes, one per property. Annual renewal required, yes. Primary residence, no, it does not have to be your primary residence, you can rent out a whole house that you're not living in. Whole house rental permitted, yes. Short-term rental period, one day to 30 days, so 30 days or less. Can use guest house or other detached structure, the answer is no. Subleasing allowed, no. Any questions so far?
I, I think we ought to go through them individually. I know we talked about them, but I think we need to go through them rather than whipping through them.
Well, that was a bundle. Is there anything in that bundle you don't agree with?
I noticed that there is no requirement for license of businesses other than a permit.
We took that out last time.
I, I understand that. And I'm saying that what difference does it make if somebody has, makes jewelry at their home and sells that on the internet? They have to have a business license. Why wouldn't you want someone that rents out their house to have a business license? It is a business, regardless of how you look at it. So they need to be licensed so that we know what's going on at each of the locations that's being rented out.
And I, that's on down, that requires business license, but I'm, I'm really clear.
Yeah, and they say no there, but I see it's got permits up here.
So the permit is for the, to, to be able to do a STR.
Right.
And then you're saying like a business license, and I, I kind of agree with that. I'm thinking, if I didn't entertain creating an STR at my house, I would do like you said, Kim, I'd create a, an LLC to protect my interests.
And get a license.
And at that point, I would, would or should have to get a license.
I think that should be your option, actually.
Well, just, just so it's, it's out there, if I am a business owner in Peachtree City, I can create an LLC and include my private home with it.
As an option.
As an option. So, you know, we're, we're getting so far into the weeds on this thing, that, you know, I, I, I don't think we...
So what are you saying, Mike? I don't understand what you're saying.
I just, you know, I, I'm, I'm just getting confused. We, we, we've been through the, I guess I've been through it for two years now. And, you know, I know we have a split council that wants to deny it entirely, and we have a split council that would like to regulate it. And so, but overregulating is, to me, is just getting a little burdensome.
Yeah. I would say, I, I would say no on the business license.
Mayor, Council.
I would say yes.
I would say yes. I do want to add that in the city, we actually do not have business licenses, they actually do occupational tax license.
Okay.
If somebody operates a business out of their house?
It's an occupational tax license, it's a home occupational tax.
It's a different name.
It's a different name, correct.
Thank you.
Is that in the, is that in the document?
Well, I'll, I'll say this in the state of...
Is they're allowing it or not allowing it?
We took it out last, it's probably not in, in here, Clint, because we took it out last workshop.
Correct. However, if you want to utilize the term business license in the state of Georgia, you just have to have a business license somewhere in the state, and you can operate in multiple locations. So utilizing the words business license doesn't necessarily mean they have to get a business license in Peachtree City if they have a business license somewhere else in the state of Georgia.
Well, thank you very much, that's a good explanation.
Frank, where are you? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Clint.
But at the same time, that does not preclude them from getting an occupational license for tax purposes.
Correct.
So we know as a city, who's doing what, which ones are being rented, et cetera. So not only a permit, but an occupational tax certificate too. Did I understand that?
How much would that cost to, to go on one of?
It's about a hundred.
It's based on number of employees?
It's about a hundred to $150.
Okay.
And then, you know, and then, and then there is staff burden, there is processing, and there is, you know, there is, uh, human resources involved. Frank, are you fine with leaving the requires business license out? Or do you want to require a business, an occupational tax license?
No, I'm not, no, I wouldn't require a business license.
Thank you, let's move on.
Occupational.
Same, same thing.
Correct, thank you. Let's go back to the bundle, Phil, did you have any objections?
Yeah, okay, so let's see, so permit, okay, annual renewal, primary residence requirement, so yeah, so that thing of, that's what, kind of what Frank was talking about, like somebody could live somewhere else and go buy 10 houses, whatever, whole house, rental permitted, okay, one day maximum. Have we gotten to the guest house yet? Was that on the next bundle?
Uh, can use guest house or other detached structure, the answer is no.
And so...
And that's, that's been like that for, I mean, we can, we can talk about why our ordinance has already disallow rental of...
Just trying to be consistent with our current ordinance.
Just, so I'm a little smarter when I leave here, Robin. Why do we say somebody cannot rent out their guest house? To me, that would be the, the easy one, you know, you, you rent it out, you're supplementing your income, and that person's out, and not in your house, and...
It's an old ordinance, so right now, you cannot, you can have detached accessory structures, but only in certain zoning districts that have large lots. And if you have them, then you have to meet certain requirements, one of which is you can't rent it out. And so, in an attempt to be consistent with our current ordinances, I, I carried that forward in the short-term rental. I believe the intent was to prevent extra density in these areas. That's all I can conjecture.
Hmm, interesting. And again, that seems like the one that, if, if I had a short-term rental with a guest house, I'd want to rent out the guest house.
Well, the answer is no currently, do you want to change it?
Would, can we change it if our ordinance is done, or is that a Ted question?
Yeah, well, as a short-term rental, this is a standalone, and so if they get a permit, you're basically giving them the right to rent out a guest home, whereas if they didn't get a permit, they wouldn't have the right. So yes, you absolutely can.
I would leave it as it stands, it's a, it's a longstanding ordinance.
Yeah, but you're saying we wouldn't be changing the ordinance there.
Right, right. It was just an attempt to be consistent.
Under short-term rental.
Under short-term rental.
Right.
I mean, I, I had somebody approach me, they go, hey, I, my guest house, I want to, I want to do an STR in it. You know, and it's like, okay, I get it. I don't understand why we would stop a, a guest house.
But doesn't that get back to the one item before, which says the primary resident requirement, meaning that the person needs to live here in Peachtree City? And the answer is right now, no, they don't have to. They can come from California and rent here.
Or Michigan.
They can buy 10, excuse me.
Or Michigan.
They can buy 10 houses here and start renting them out. They're basically an investor. And I really would love to have young people try to buy in Peachtree City and not have investment companies come into this city and take them over. Our corporations, as Frank has called it, I call them investors, but it's the same kind of thing, coming in here and gobbling up all the properties, so we don't have new families coming in here. Isn't that what Peachtree City was founded on? Was families and family values? Or is it, no, we're, we're, we're open to investors, come on in, buy it all up, destroy it as you see fit, and destroy the values that we built over 60, is it 64, 65 years? We built in this city, and now have those values go away? No, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think they need to be primary resident requirements in here.
Mr. Holland, we're going to continue going through the list that we have in our hands.
So I don't get a, don't even get a yes or a no from anybody on that?
Well, that's kind of what we've, kind of already said, that we're going to have Ted look at, I believe, right? Is if we can even do that, right?
Two issues.
But, but the guest house is...
That's a different story.
That's a different...
That's separate, yeah.
So I'm just saying, I think we need to have Ted look at that requirement to see if it is something that we can do in this area.
Let, let me ask something, again, just so I'm a little smarter when I leave here. So if I have a house and a guest house, can I live in the guest house?
Um, not under our current ordinance. I know, I'm just...
So guests can't live there, and I can't?
It can't. It's supposed to, so nobody is supposed to permanently reside in a guest house, it is supposed to be for guests. And so that's what, the way the ordinance, I'm just, don't shoot the messenger.
Are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
I would just have to tell you that after the last meeting we had, workshop, someone approached me and said, if I had a house and I had a pool house, why couldn't I move into the pool house and let somebody stay in my house for two weeks? And I said, well, you probably can, you're probably breaking our ordinances, but you probably could do that. So we got to be careful about that.
So, agreed. So our ordinance is prohibit living in these accessory dwelling units, is that an ADU? In the accessory dwelling units, nobody's supposed to be living in them. I think we should stick with it.
I think we need to make it clear that you can't, just because you own a pool house, you don't want, and we wouldn't let them do a short-term rental there, that doesn't mean you can stay there for two weeks and do a short-term rental in your house.
All right, so...
Mayor, can I make a quick suggestion?
Please.
So if you, if you would, just for staff's clarity and for my clarity, when we go through this list, if you, I'm hearing no, yes, no, maybe, I'm, I'm not getting a consistent agreement from a consensus of the council as to, do they want to keep these items in or don't want to keep these items in? So if you could please take a, a roll call vote, if, if, or something along the lines, just let me know that the majority of council wants these in, that way I can make sure when we bring this back, that it's consistent with the, the request being asked.
Very reasonable, thank you. So far, we've gone through the list. Grandfather's existing STR, no, we're going to stick with that. Permit required, yes, one for each property. Annual renewal required, yes. Everybody good with that so far?
Yes.
All right. Primary residence requirement, currently, the answer is no. We have no requirement that you have to live in the property that you are short-term renting out, and we can check with Ted on that and make sure that's legally enforceable.
Well, do we even have a consensus amongst the, the five of us on this?
The proposed, the proposed ordinance says, no, you don't have to live in a property that you're short-term renting out. I certainly, as a...
Mayor, I think this means that you don't have to live in Peachtree City.
Right, so primary residence means that you are, are, have gotten a home exemption on that property. That, you've got a tax abatement on that property, you have declared that as your primary residence. It doesn't mean that you have to be on the property at the time, it just means that you, maybe you stay in Canada or Michigan, Michigan during the summer, and then you come down here for the winter, and you declare this one is your primary residence. And so...
I, I think the issue is, if you live elsewhere in Peachtree City and you own this property, you want to short-term rent it.
That would be permitted, the way the ordinance is currently written.
Even with, you have no in that column.
Correct.
Well, that would mean if someone lived in Alabama and they have a property here, and their residence is in Alabama, would they be required to have homestead exemptions here in the state?
They cannot, they cannot claim it twice.
Under this one, but if we put yes in there, they will need to have, they'll need to be a resident here in this city, or in Georgia.
And, and that property is their primary residence.
And that's their primary residence. So again, you're back feeding this to the investors that Frank was, Frank was arguing about, which is said, do we want corporations, investors doing all of this stuff?
What if you had two homes on the lake? Because I know somebody that does that, and they rent one of them out, short-term, and they live in the other one.
They could not do that, the way that this is, if you changed that column to a yes, they could not do that.
Wait, you, you're saying that if they own two houses, and one of them they declare as their primary residence, the other one they cannot rent out?
Correct, because the short-term rental cannot be issued if you change that column.
If you change from no to yes. Right now, it's no. Right now, it says no, which means you can have more than one property in Peachtree City, live in one of the homes, and short-term rent out the other one, as long as it says no in that column.
I, I understand that. And what I'm asking for is further definitions here. If they are a resident of the city and they have more than one property, I don't have a problem with them being a resident, they live here, you want to rent out your second property? God bless you. But what you're saying is, someone can just have as many properties as they want, if you keep the no in there, and they don't have to live here, they can live in Alabama or Michigan and rent out all of them. What I'm saying is, I think we ought to have some type of requirement where you've got to own and have a resident here. And if you've got more than one property, God bless you, go invest in those, go and rent those. But I think it's this, this ordinance, we are all residents here of Peachtree City, we need to take care of our city. This is our city.
The, the item is currently no, and so you want Ted to take a look at whether people who short-term rental out a property they own in Peachtree City have to be Peachtree City residents.
They have to have, what was the term you used? They have to have a homestead?
A res, yes, a home, we would check for homestead exemption somewhere on, in Peachtree City.
If they have a homestead, that means they're, they're here in this city. They own property in this city.
And they claim it as their primary.
Right, and pay taxes in this city. And the answer is yes for that.
Do I, oh, that's what you want?
That's what I want.
You want that changed to yes, so that someone who has a short-term rental property in Peachtree City cannot live in Sharpsburg, they cannot live in Fayetteville, they cannot live elsewhere. They have to have another residence in Peachtree City.
If that's the way you're phrasing it, the answer to that is yes, mayor. I would definitely want to have that, because isn't this our city? This is not Sharpsburg City.
Again, with the grandstanding, Mr. Holland.
I'm not grandstanding, I'm answering your question.
We are looking at an agenda item that says no, do you want it?
And I've said, put it yes.
All right, we'll check, we'll have the city attorney check on the legal requirement to have the owner of a property that's short-term rented out be a Peachtree City resident. Next item, whole house rental permitted, yes. Everybody on that?
Yes.
All right. Short-term rental period, maximum 30 days. We're good?
Yes.
All right. Can use guest house or other detached structure? No.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'd like for us to look into that. I mean, if I, if I, if I do have a house and I've got a guest house, I, I'd like that person to be able to rent that guest house out.
But they would be the owner of that house, and the guest house, so that they would be a resident here, definitely.
I would think for someone who does not want proliferation of short-term rentals, that you would want it to remain no.
Just trying to do the right thing, if, if, if the group, I'm a team player here, if, if the team says we're going to allow short-term rentals, well, let's allow them. And if somebody has a, a guest house, I see no reason why they cannot rent out that guest house on a short-term rental.
I do not support that. Mr. Holland, do you support that?
At, at this time, like I said in my opening argument, is that I'm against it, but given the fact that it was voted three to two, that we're going to go forward, I'd like to restrict them. And in this particular case, that person that owns that home and owns the guest home, they are residents here in the city, and I would say yes, that they could rent that. I don't know if that made it clear.
Mr., yeah, you say no?
Yes.
Yes, you want them to be able to rent out guest houses?
Yes, I mean, to me, it's, it's a mother-law suite or an outside, separate building, yeah, it's all of the residents, they're there, fine.
Yep.
Okay, just, just so you know, the, okay, all right, I'm going to move on. Subleasing allowed, the answer is no. Are we good with that?
Yes.
Maximum in city, we've got 5% of all residents, of all single-family residential. I think that's high, but I think as a start, that that's a very reasonable maximum to put on. We can revisit in six months or a year if we feel like that's, that number is too high.
I, I think it's too high also, mayor. I can agree with you.
I think it's too high also.
And so there's three of us right there. I'm, I'm saying I'd rather start low, and let's see what happens. I mean, there may be a lot of people saying, oh my gosh, we got, we can do a lot of rental here, we're residents here, we can do a lot of rental. Why not then bring it up?
Is there a...
And we can do that at a later time.
Is there another city that has a different maximum, a different ceiling? Is there another city that has a different maximum, a different ceiling?
The only one I found was 5%, but I just did the math, 1% is 126, 2% would be 100 and, or 252.
You know, I think 2.5%. That's very random. Obviously.
You're, you're feeling around in the dark, you don't know how many we have now.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly. Does anybody know how many we have?
We, so I have been meeting with third-party monitoring contractors to get an idea of how much an annual contract would cost, and as, as part of their sale, they give us sort of a readout of what we currently have, and we're in the realm, because it does change, depending on the time of year, we're in the realm of 96 to 100, right now.
So 1% is-
A little bit less than 1% right now.
Yeah. I would do 3%.
1%, is 126, and they're doing 96 now, so we're less than 1% right now.
Yes, sir.
So I wouldn't, I, I would see a good start, maybe 1.5, 2%? Just, that's just my opinion, though, I have nothing to base it on.
None of us do.
I think, I think-
None of us do, really.
Yeah. I mean, uh-
It can always, it can always be raised.
Yep, exactly.
Started at, Mike, I would start it at 3. You want to upvote me?
Yes.
Start it at 3.
Yeah. I want to, I want to start it at 1.5.
I'd go with that.
Well, you went with both of them.
All right, 1.5, 1.5, and we'll talk about it later, I guess.
Again, that's something that can be changed.
Exactly.
All right. Parties or special events permitted? The answer is no. Keep a guest register, no.
Can I ask a question about that, Mayor? I know that you said that, and you read off people that are renting your house or want to rent your house, they write to you. Why wouldn't we just take whoever is calling in or want to take that, and just keep that as a register, so we know who was there? It's not, it's not coming in like a hotel and filling out paperwork and stuff, but somebody wrote to you, and that you said, yes, okay, and we've got, you've got that person's name and address.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be a register?
That, it's a known, the property owners know, of course, the information about the people they, they allow on their property. The question is, do they have to disclose that to city officials?
To city officials, or just to the owner?
No, they all have to disclose to the owner. The owner absolutely knows. And by the way, before we go on, Airbnb prohibits parties, expressly prohibits parties.
No, it's not the Airbnb, it's the other ones.
Yeah.
Right, all right.
So, keep guests register, we have a no. Now, that being said, Frank, I hope that answered your question.
It does.
Yeah.
I have a comment on that. You go into a hotel right now, and rent rooms, you have to supply a driver's license, or some type of I D, and a credit card with your name on it. Why wouldn't we want to do that for our short-term rentals? This way, the owners got protected, because they have the-
They do.
It is required by the owners?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Even if they don't use an Airbnb or anything like that?
Anyone who stays in a property that is owned, has to provide all that information, personal information, credit card information.
But we don't have that in the ordinance, we're saying we don't-
Why don't we?
We're saying, we're not requiring as a city that the owner disclose the personal information of their guests.
Okay, so-
The bottom line here, Clint, is that we don't want to be responsible for personal information being let out.
But I, I-
Leave it, it would be property owner, be done with it.
Well, I, I understand that, and I do respect the, the privacy issue, but also, there are things like called trafficking, and I would certainly think that the police department would want to know the identification of that individual, and also-
It can be, it can be tracked, every owner knows who's been in the property.
So can we say that the owner must, we don't need it?
No.
Can we say the owner has to-
Get that information.
-verify who's staying there?
I like that.
How do you want to enforce that?
Well, it would only come up if there were something suspect.
Yep.
We could go, hey, who was staying there last week? And then they wouldn't go, well, I don't know, right? But if we say, well, I don't know, I wish I saw Matt at that, I'd like to ask his thoughts on it.
Yeah.
You got any thoughts on it, Bob?
As far as the registry is concerned?
Well, or about just identification of some type, we don't have to have it as a city, but I think that the owner needs-
Well, so typically, if you're using a V R B O or one of the vacation rentals, it's a requirement that you put that information in there, so that the owners of the property have contact information from who's physically staying there. A guest register in this scenario, from what I understand, and Robin, correct me if I'm wrong, is actually a guest register that would be available at that house, so if somebody were, like, the police were to show up, they know who's actually going to be staying there. That information is not readily available by V R B O unless the owners need that information, obviously, they'll have access to it, but if the police show up, then they'd have to contact the owners and verify who was actually in the house.
I agree with you.
It's how the owners get the information.
The owners would have the information if they're using the rental service, they, they absolutely have all that contact information.
That's assuming they are, we don't know what the percentage is of those that use the internet platform for renting versus somebody says, hey, you know, I know that we've got some down the street that's up for rent, and they call their brother-in-law up in North Carolina and say, hey, you want to come down, there's a rental here, give these people a call. There's no, there's no identification at all, brother-in-law, whatever. I just think it's a little dangerous to not have some type of identification, even if the owner has to have the identification.
The owner has the, the identification, it's, I mean, it's-
It's, well, that's if you use a platform, if you don't use a platform, then you don't have that information, unless we put it into the ordinance.
Can I ask Chief Myers? So we're, we're discussing, on here it says as a guest register, and so we're trying to think of different scenarios of, okay, Airbnb, some of the other ones, okay, the owner knows who's staying there, and then the other scenario is, okay, somebody rents off of Billy Bob's Airbnb, and Billy Bob doesn't get that information.
So, I know he was answering, but I did want to kind of cut that scenario out, because part of the ordinance, as far as them collecting state lodging tax, they have to sign an affidavit that says that they're using a platform that collects lodging tax, so if they are contacting, if they're not using a platform that pays tax to the state of Georgia, and they're calling Billy Bob, they cannot have a short-term rental permit at all.
I got you. You, you have any thoughts on it?
I, I do, so in the scenario that, you know, we do need to have some sort of information about the people that are staying there, it can be scattered across different possible platforms, like Airbnb or another, and there's oftentimes difficulties in getting an answer out of them, and maybe they don't have a complete inventory. One of the things I discussed with Robin as she was drafting the ordinance was how that would be resolved, and if that would be required for the property owner to have, that they maintain, and that the person that has a 24-hour, you know, they have a 24-hour availability, that we can call, get that information, have somebody to respond, so that was one of the things we're trying to remedy with the ordinance, I believe, and Robin can correct me if I'm wrong, but that would bring the lowest level of responsibility down to the homeowner or their agent, rather than relying upon a platform provider to have that information, in which case, we may not be able to contact them, we may, we may have incomplete information, there could be serious delays, for example.
So if we require it in the ordinance, then we have, we can tell them that they have to give it to us. If we don't require it in the ordinance, even though they have the information, we can't force them to give it to us.
So we want to make it where we require.
That's good, so we want to make it, exactly. This way, they have to actually have the people sign in, get some identification, now, they don't have to disclose it unless, you know, the chief here says, I need to know these people that are in there, can you get that information for us? And then we can go after it, and then they have to disclose it to you.
The question is, what form?
That's what you're saying.
What form is that guest registry going to take? Because if I'm an owner, then I have all of the information about who's staying, I know how they paid me, I have their credit-
And it's a matter of, we want, in the ordinance, we want you to be able to go, if Chief Myers goes to you and say, hey, Kim, who's living there? You don't go, I'm not telling you, right? But if, if it's in the ordinance, then by-
So the question is not whether or not we keep a guest register, the question is not, the question becomes whether we can put the onus on the property owner to provide guest information for safety, for public safety purposes.
Correct.
That's the issue.
It's almost the same thing as a guest register, you're just using different words.
Yeah, so, that's something we need to-
I, I would, I don't really have any position one way or the other on the whole S T R issue, but I would say that in the case that we do have to investigate something at one of these properties, the easiest way to be able to identify the parties involved would be some type of guest registry, and we have no means of holding a third-party platform like Airbnb accountable, or forcing them to answer, at least not without a protracted process to require serving them with a legal process.
So, I don't disagree with what you're saying, so let's, is that a, a legal question? Can we require anywhere that guest information must be made available to the city upon request?
In my opinion, that's consistent with other general ordinances, and I would say, you know, you can check with the city attorney to make sure before we actually finalize that.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm fine with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Require a landline? The answer is no. Require a business license? We've decided no.
Well, I, I think we, we've just, we've talked about it, we haven't got a consensus on that, Mayor, and maybe we can get a little consensus on if it's not a business license and occupational, correct me on the term.
Occupational tax.
Occupational tax, thank you. Any consensus on that?
I would say no, we've already got a permit process and everything that it takes.
And I would say we should have an occupational.
And I would say we need an occupational also.
Mike? No. No. All right, moving on. Collect lodging tax, yes, of course. Everybody good so far?
Yeah.
And we're two-thirds of the way through, the rest is smooth sailing. Required to meet current fire and building codes.
Yes, yes.
I, as a, as a property owner, I've already shared my firsthand experience with a, a property in another state, in two more years, or in one more year now, I will re-up my permit through the website in the city where I own a property, and that is all, and I'm, I'm safe and clean and well-vested in keeping a fire extinguisher and everything to protect my property. I think this is a matter of the property, the public, private property interests of property owners, and if we're going to require annual inspections, then we better be prepared when budget comes, and, and we do not have manpower in our fire department to go out and do, what'd we say, 200 inspections, and half of them will need a re-inspection.
96, according to what the last number was.
And half of them will need a re-inspection, and in my opinion, we better be ready to man up.
Okay.
Okay. Off-street parking required, yes. Garbage storage requirements, which means it has to be not visible from the street. I don't like that, but yes, okay. Notification to neighbors within 500 feet radius and with contact agent information. We said yes, I think that is an outrageous invasion of privacy. I, I cannot imagine having to inventory, identify, get the addresses, somebody and city staff now has to sit there and notify all neighbors within 500 feet, around the corner, through the backyards, I've never, I've never seen it, and I object to this. Mike?
Well, I don't see why the city staff would have to do it, it's the property owner that's doing the S T R, would have to make sure that the neighbors-
We can't hold property owners responding, hey, did you do 500?
Why not? It's in the ordinance, they're required to do it. I think it's got to be, in, in actuality, I'm wondering if 500 feet is enough, 500 feet's just a little over a football field away.
Two-thirds.
You know, what's that?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay, but it's, you know-
He doesn't play football.
Yes, but the point is that, what about the other people in the neighborhood? You've got neighborhoods with hundreds of, of homes in there, and don't they need to know?
No, they don't, and most of my neighbors don't, so-
I'm not asking you, I'm just asking in general, do they really need to know? I would say the neighborhood people might need to know.
I'm a no on that, shh, shh, I'm a no on that.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
You already have three.
Yep.
You're a yes?
Okay.
All right, moving on. Requires local contact agent, yes. Agent must be on site, within time limit, yes, within one hour. Short-term rental permit posted on site, what is that? I don't know what that even-
I don't even remember that one.
It's, you'd have that, you know what it doesn't, it's the local contact number will be on that permit, so, I apologize, yeah, that's what that meant. So that if they have an issue with the property, they can call that local contact person themselves.
All right, that's a yes. Fines for violation, first is 1,000, second is 1,000, third is 1,000, plus revocation for 24 months, and finally, application fees, $400, $75 late application fee, is that annual?
It is annual.
An annual fee of $400?
How do we come up with that amount?
I, our inspections, we have two inspections, an hour plus of their time is $100 each, and then there will be, hopefully, a third-party contractor who can help us monitor these, make sure that we've got permits for all those that are out there, and that has at least $7,000 a year cost, and so I took those fees and allocated it up and came up with this number.
Okay, thank you.
Does it, does that include enforcement also, for visits and enforcement over the course of a year? And I'm not asking that we do more work, please, I'm not, but, you know, have we at least thought it through?
I think it, I think it would balance out, but if we get a bad seed, and we end up having P D going out there a couple of times, certainly not, but that's why we've got that three-strikes-you're-out policy.
Okay, thank you.
And that takes us through the list. I did take notes, do you have any questions, Bob?
No, I think, I'm just going to look at staff, because they were taking notes as well, so I think, Mayor, it sounds to me as though we need to do one more brush on this and then bring it back, most likely in a, in a workshop, or-
Yes, workshop.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to a workshop with a condensed version of what we heard this evening, and then we can sit down and, and talk about that a little bit further. Obviously, we're going to need to get with the attorney on that, so we'll set a future date for the workshop and let you all know when that will happen.
Thank you. Moving on. Budget.
Madam Mayor, I've got a couple more questions on, on this. If the homeowners' association in a certain neighborhood bans this, is that something that would-
It's banned.
It's banned in that neighborhood, not, so city law, does, city ordinances do not override the local codes?
Oh, no, sir, we do not override H O A, those are private contracts, and we cannot override them.
Okay, just my, it was just clarification for me, I needed to add that, and I may have some other questions, but right now, it looks like you want to move on to the next topic.
Absolutely. Mr. Kurnap.
Thank you, Mayor. Could just get the presentation pulled up here. Excellent, so I just wanted to, to say thank you, appreciate the opportunity to present my approach for the fiscal '24 budget this year, just as a side note, you know, as per the city charger, charter, it is a requirement of the city manager to propose the budget, and while this is not a full presentation of the budget, this is a glimpse of the methodology that I'm using, and based on the conditions and the environmental factors that exist, which was what I'm taking a look as far as the budget is concerned, preparation. So if you remember back in March, council and the executive leadership team attended a retreat, where we worked on two days creating a new vision and core values for the city, and up there, you'll see uncompromised excellence, which is circled, and that's going to be something that's carried to this presentation. When I look at all of the factors that go into the budget this year, and the challenges that we're facing at the city level, I just want everybody to keep in the back of their mind that the focus for the budget is going to be on uncompromised excellence. So, I purposely made this an eye chart, so you would sit there and look at that very handsome police officer that's up there in the right-hand corner, but there's something that I wanted to draw to your attention, is that the city's top priority is to maintain Is that the city's top priority is to maintain existing service levels in all divisions and departments. So when we create our budget, we look at that as to maintaining those service levels and the amenities of the city that we provide. We provide those amenities to all 38,000 residents of the city and anybody that comes in the city that takes advantage of our restaurants and our patronage for retail, so on and so forth. So the city's primary objective is to provide a standard budgetary performance for the staff and council, which is endorsed and to move forward for continuity, to reinforce the city's core financials, and preserving that for successive staff and council. We do this by creating a baseline service level. And what I mean by baseline service level is that we identify a revenue source to a cost value for the city. So if we take on a new initiative, we typically would identify a certain revenue source to pay for that. Any deviation from that, if an unfunded mandate or a cost comes in that we don't have, we would then go back to the budget and look for areas in the budget in which we would need to make those changes. So you've heard me say this a couple of times in, in our meetings. There are three areas of sustainability that I look at from a governance or city manager's perspective. One of those is financial sustainability, the other is operational sustainability, and one, and the last one is environmental sustainability. We're gonna touch on all of those. But what I wanted to draw your attention to is this chart here that's showing that the cost of all items, and I put food in there as well because that's also going up. So anybody that knows that's gone to the grocery store has seen the food increase and the prices going up. But key under the financial sustainability word is that Peachtree City is not immune to those inflationary costs either. So as you will notice over the last several months that I've been here, the majority of contracts that have come in front of council have had significant cost increases associated with them. One of the other examples on here is we typically base our cost increases by what's called the CPI or Consumer Price Index. Right now, the CPI is at about 5.5%. So to give you an analogy of how that works, let's say, for example, I buy a piece of technology that has a five-year lifespan on it. So the initial cost of that technology would be X, and then every year outgoing, I would buy a maintenance contract that would keep that up to date. That maintenance contract would then theoretically be subject to a 5.5% cost increase every year for that service. However, that's just one aspect of technology, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. One of the main things I do wanna talk about, though, is that we've seen some extremely high increases in a lot of the things that we're doing here as far as the city and the necessities that we use. So for example, we've seen about a 50% increase in paving. We've seen about a 50% increase in those costs associated with asphalt and concrete and a lot of that stuff. And I know that's being faced, you know, industry-wide. Like I said before, we brought contracts in front of you that showed that 50% increase. We've seen increases in our vehicle and equipment, our equipment that we use in public works and rec. We've seen increases in our fleet vehicles, and those have been up about 30%. The other interesting fact about this, whether you wanna call it supply chain, or we've been in supply chain fatigue for a really long time, is that a lot of these contracts, we need to get in very early on. So for example, we need to get sometimes in as much as a year, almost two years in advance of taking delivery of that equipment, just because that's how long that waiting line is to get something prepared. So here's a good example of the cost increases. So on the left-hand side, and where the big circle is, you'll see that this contract came to us in December of 2021, and this is for a ton of asphalt. Back then, we were paying $66.45 a ton. If we flash forward one year to December of '22, that price has gone up to $85.75 a ton. That significant increase is about 29%. That does not include in any of the labor that's associated with actually putting this down. If you add in the factor of the labor, that equates to about a 55% increase in the cost of just getting that down. So understand that moving forward with this, and a lot of the asphalt that we use is for paving our paths and paving our roads. If we're not increasing the budgets in that area, that means that we have less paths that we pave and less roads that we take care of. So again, going forward, we put the budget together, we're assuming the cost increases for these commodities. This is another interesting one. We, our fire chief, I know he's not here this evening, but he, he attended a conference, and they were talking about public safety construction costs. And this is something that I brought to you in briefings as well, and we talked about some of the things that we're dealing with. Over the last three years, we've seen about a 55% increase in the costs associated with public safety construction. And these are typically your hardened structures, so they're built a little bit more substantial than a regular house dwelling would be. And if you compound that number over three years, that's about a 65.5% increase in the construction costs that are associated with that. So for example, we discussed back in 2022, before I got here, staff brought in front of council the construction of Fire Station 86, which is up at the Everton area. So that's a brand-new piece of property. There's no fire station that exists. Back in 2022, the estimated cost of that fire station was $4.1 million. And we divided that up amongst other funding sources like ARPA and some impact fees and things along those lines. We're not quite yet finished with architectural and engineering design on that fire station, but that price is slowly approaching $6 million at this point. So it is pricing itself out of being feasible. And actually, we have gone and scaled that building down from having admin offices for our fire administration folks to just making it a, a response and support location. So, you know, these are the things that we're faced with. Addition to that, I wanted to bring up, we went back in 2021, staff brought in front of you cost estimate for a building addition on the back of the police department for some additional storage and some different, additional office. Back then, that price in 2021 was estimated at $1.9 million. Currently, that price, as it going through architectural and engineering design, is coming in at about $3.5 million for that cost of construction, going back and looking at this increase. In addition to that, that does not include a $500,000 spend for a generator that would take care of that entire building and a power outage. And currently at that location, the generator that exists is not at capacity to power the entire public safety building as we sit right now. I mentioned earlier, technology costs. This is also pretty significant. This year, we're realizing the cost of moving to Office 365, which is a cloud-based solution, and are emailing a cloud-based solution. So typically, and, and I have a pretty extensive background in technology, so I can speak to this until the cows come home, but I promise I'll be short. The idea behind technology now is most of your large software providers are going to what's called a subscription-based service, where they're moving you to a cloud environment. Microsoft is one of those, Adobe is one of those, to name a few. So typically, when you would, prior to this move, you would buy a license, you would have that license exist on this piece of equipment. Now that license cost is a yearly license cost to maintain your connectivity to the cloud environment. Additionally, we're seeing increase in all of our technology across the board. So you can see we had about a 30% increase that we're estimating for fiscal year 2024. The last section up here under cybercrime, I do wanna bring some attention to, because that is a very ongoing and very critical area of protecting all of the data that exists in the city. So cybersecurity, we use many layers of cybersecurity technology here to provide confidentiality and integrity and availability of our data. And in doing so, each one of those requires a maintenance contract associated, and every year, the cost increases with that technology. Just as a side note, from a cybercrime perspective, as a little tidbit of information, from the beginning of the year, there have been 33 local governments in the U.S. that have been hit by ransomware, and 20 of those governments have had their data stolen. So I just wanna understand the magnitude of that. The recovery process alone of getting back from a cyber incident is typically in the millions of dollars. But the other challenge of doing that is if your personally identifiable information or your customer information is taken, then there's a duty to respond by the entity in which that data was taken, and you have to typically provide some identity theft protection and notification, and there's a lot of other things that go along with that. So a lot of the things that we do from a cybercrime perspective are to put barriers in place to prevent that from happening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over, so you get to hear another voice here. This is our Assistant City Manager, Justin Strickland.
Thank you, Bob. All right, so I'm gonna shift the conversation a little bit to talk about funding sources primarily. We're gonna be talking about millage rate, property taxes, et cetera, and then how that relates to the budget and what we're looking at for this year. First off, I wanna start with, and I do wanna give credit to Paul Salvatore, who's not here today. He's our finance director. He put together a lot of these slides that I'm gonna do, and then we're gonna get into the part I was originally gonna do, but I wanted to give him credit for these. I did not do these slides, Paul did. So one of the theories that we've been using for the city for the past 20 years, and is commonplace to use in the government sector, is balancing your most stable revenue source, which is our property taxes, with your most critical expense area, which is our public safety, which is fire and police. So really, what you're, what you're measuring here is how does your most stable funding source match up with your expenses of your most critical areas, which is fire and police? The reason we do this is because we can't control the millage rate. Not we as staff, but council can control the millage rate. We cannot control sales tax. We cannot control how much sales tax is being collected, what people are going and buying. But council can set the millage rate and control what we bring in as far as property taxes and how we're covering those needed expenses. And it's a pretty good benchmark for measuring those critical areas. So we're gonna look at some charts here, we're gonna look at some different scenarios. The first chart, what we're looking at is the past 10 years of, let me get my laser here. The green line here is our property tax revenue. The red line is our expenses of public safety, which is just police and fire, nothing else of expenses from the city. What, what the goal is, is for public safety expenses to be right on with that property tax collection, because then your most critical expenses are covered by your most stable revenue source. So you see here, these, right at 2013, there was a gap in expenses up here and collections here. This was because we were coming out of the recession. We actually were still experiencing property tax value decline here. There was a 5% drop in 2013, and then it actually started growth. This is 14 is when it actually started growing back again. You can see it stabilized. Our expenses were pretty stable throughout this time. And they pretty much stayed right on all the way up until 2021, or, or '22. In '22, council did do a full millage rollback. The rollback was .189 mils. And that's where we see kind of the divergent happen, the divergence happen there, where our property tax revenues have now kinda gone off from our expenses with public safety. And the big jump here with expenses goes back to what Bob was presenting earlier of we are not immune to inflation. Just like, as residents and citizens, I'm a resident of Peachtree City, we're not immune to the stuff that we have to buy going up. The city's not immune to all of its expenditures going up as well. Oh, and I did wanna go back. So, and in this scenario, so we're, we're, we're currently in '23. So for fiscal year '24, if council did decide to do a point-mil-one reduction, this is kind of what the graph would show, how the gap would be, the gap is widening a little bit. This is the graph representation of that scenario. So you can see with the full rollback from '21 to '22, we were about $100,000 short on revenues over expenditures with taxes and public safety. We were hovering around that 100%. With the full rollback, we went down to 93.5% coverage. This year, we're at 92.1, and with a point, with a potential point-one mil rollback, we would be right at the 90, 91% tile there, or about $2 million short of covering just public safety. So, and then what is the impact of a point-mil-one reduction? Based on the average home value, which is 446,000 right now in Peachtree City, that would save the average person about $17.83 for the year with a point-mil, point-one mil reduction. So next scenario, I'm not gonna review what the graph is again. It's the same graph, but the only difference is, is this is a point-two mil reduction. So you see, it just kinda widens it just a little bit more. And then the graphical representation here, it goes down to about 2.5, 2.6 million, or about 89, 90% coverage for a point-two. And then for that same $44, $446,000 house, you'd be looking at a savings of about $35.68 per homeowner. And I do wanna caveat this, every home is different. So like, if it goes back and your house is not worth exactly $446,000, your savings would be different. And how the value, yeah, the value of your house. So with Paul's calculations this year, talking with the tax assessor and the task commissioner's office, based on the initial digest, the digest is not finalized for this year, so these numbers are not official or finalized. But what we are expecting is that a full rollback would, would be .577 mils. So to do a full rollback this year, it would require us to rollback .577 mils. And you see, the revenue stays flat, which is what a rollback is. The slight increase there is just because of new growth, which is not part of the rollback. And then, but you see how big the gap starts to become there between public safety expenditures and property tax collections. So in that scenario of a full rollback, the gap becomes $4 million, and it takes us down to 84% funding of public safety from property taxes. And for that house of $446,000, it would save a property owner $102.93 per year. So another thing we wanted to just warn about, this is also Paul's slide and some research that he did. There are some indications out there that the housing market is starting to turn, and this is nationwide. This is a nationwide article, I think you read a few of them, about how, for the first time in 11 years, nationwide, nationwide home sales have begun to decrease for the first time. And the reason we're not seeing that potentially yet in Fayette County is because county current assessments in Fayette County are as of January 1. Say the value of your home is valued every January 1st. So if there is some impact to that here, we wouldn't see that until next year's assessments, because the decline started in February. So worst-case scenario, Paul kinda taking that information and then looking at, if we did a full millage rollback this year, which is 2024, he actually went another year into '25. And if we did that full rollback in '24, and then the housing market declined by 5%, or the housing values declined by 5% like they did in 2013, this would be the gap that we start to see between property taxes and public safety. And then that's the worst, you know, that's where it goes from 4 million next year, and then potentially down to 6.87 million at 74% level funding there. All right, and so in then this scenario, what we're looking at here is, you know, we were pretty straight-on here, 100% funded, public safety to property taxes. We did a, a scenario with what would it actually take to get back to 100% of property taxes funding public safety? And it would actually be pretty much the exact opposite of a full rollback. It would be a roll-up of .577 mils to get back to fully funded operations of public safety with property taxes. That does not mean staff is recommending a .577 mil increase. It just was, we just wanted to show what that would take, because that would probably be a question somebody asked. Okay, so I'm gonna shift into my slides now, which were the ones I actually did. But wanted to make sure y'all got that information. So my big question is, what does it cost to live in Peachtree City? What does it actually cost a resident to live here? And what do you get for that money that you're, that you're paying to the city in ta, in those property taxes? What I'm showing here is, this is the municipal maintenance and operations millage rate for every municipality in Fayette County that collects municipal taxes. Woolsey is a municipality in Fayette County, but they do not collect, they don't have a millage rate. They just collect county taxes, or they don't collect it. You just pay county taxes in Woolsey. You see Peachtree City here does have the highest millage rate of all the municipalities in Fayette County. Fayetteville, Second, then Tyrone, then Brooks. What I, what I really wanna highlight here is Peachtree City is the highest based on the municipal millage rates, but what are you actually getting in those cities for that? And is, is this pretty, is this accurate? What are your, what are you actually paying to live in these places? So I went in and I've done, I went into the, all the tax records and verified all this information. Just FYI to everyone. But going in and actually adding in the municipal millage rates and the county millage rates, you'll see that the numbers start to change. Over here, if you just live in unincorporated Fayette County, you're paying your county maintenance and operations, you're paying your county fire district tax, you're paying your county EMS tax, and then you're paying your county E911 tax. So your county E911 is this purple sliver up here on each one. We actually do split that. Every single jurisdiction in Fayette County, we all split that cost, and the county runs it. But you'll notice that Peachtree City, we only pay municipal tax, the county MNO, and the E911. You get over to Tyrone, they pay for fire, and they pay for EMS, which we don't pay because we do that ourselves. You pay that in your Peachtree City here, whereas Tyrone pays it to the county. Fayetteville, same thing, a little different. They pay their municipal rate, they pay the county MNO, and then they pay the EMS rate, which the EMS rate is because they don't do EMS. They do fire, but they don't do EMS transport. So they do that to the county. And then Brooks, kinda the same thing as Tyrone. They pay their municipal, but then they, they do fire and EMS through the county. So when you actually look at the millage rates people are being charged for where you live, Peachtree City actually has a lower millage rate than Tyrone and Fayetteville to live in Peachtree City. So then I break that out. Peachtree City, where do your property taxes go? So a $446,000 property, like we were looking at earlier, the median kinda house value in Peachtree City, your total taxes do, last year, this is for 2022, $5,403.20. 66% of your taxes are going to the school board, right off the top. So of that $5,403, two-thirds of it's going to our schools. About a fifth of it, 20%, is coming to Peachtree City, and then the rest of it's going to the county. All right, and then finally, if we go back to this bar chart here, I took this bar chart and then condensed it onto this, into the stacked bar chart. So you see, this is everything all together. This is your total tax bill for a $446,000 property if you lived in each one of these areas in Fayette County. So you'll see, it's actually more the most expensive to live in Tyrone, if you have a $446,000 house, then Fayetteville, then Peachtree City, then Brooks, and Fayette County. And between all of them, no matter where you live in Fayette County, you're gonna be paying about $500 within each other. Like if you live in unincorporated, you're paying about $500 less per year than if you lived right here in Peachtree City. So the big thing for me is what do you actually get of that, of the municipal millage rate that you're paying, and you actually are paying less to live here than in Tyrone per value of property than in Tyrone and Fayetteville? What do you get in Peachtree City that you would not get in those places? First thing is a premier fire and EMS service. Like we said, Tyrone and Fayetteville, especially Tyrone, they don't do fire or EMS. We do fire and EMS directly, so if you have a heart attack or stroke or any, any kind of major medical incident, you wanna have it in Peachtree City, because we respond quickly and we have, we have EMS directly here in the city. We have an ISO-1 fire department. Tyrone and Fayetteville do not provide fire services, it's through the county. We have a great parks, we have great parks and recreation areas. We have yearly events. We have great parks, we have great parks and recreation areas, we have yearly events, we have the Fred, and we have a year-round aquatic center that these places don't have. There's not an aquatic center in Tyrone, there's not an aquatic center in Fayetteville. We maintain a year-round aquatic center. We have a premier public library. Our library, the pine system is 146 counties out of the 159 in Georgia, and our library has the second highest circulation in that system in the state. So our library moves books, and it moves digital media, like our library is a fantastic library. We have 100 miles of multi-use path. Tyrone and Fayetteville do not have that. They have some paths, but they do not have what we have with the 100-mile multi-use path, and that's paid for with the property taxes you pay to Peachtree City. We have the safest city to live in Georgia. I mean, we put it out there on social media, multiple times, we are rated the best place to live in Georgia and the safest place to live in Georgia because of the fantastic police department we have, and that's paid for through your taxes. And then finally, we maintain a lot of the neighborhood signs, and I actually didn't know this when I got here, and it really surprised me. We maintain a lot of the neighborhood signs with tax money in the city, and all the media landscaping, everything we do here, that comes through that. So I think, and then beyond that, our staff, we have some of the best staff in Fayette County, if not the state, and we have, we keep our equipment up, we keep all that cycled through like we should. And I think for, kind of looking at what those millage rates are, and what you get and the value in Peachtree City, at the end of the day, when you're looking at your total property taxes, Peachtree City is a pretty awesome place to live, and we take that money and extend it, and use that to keep this place one of the best places to be in Georgia. And I'll pass it back over to Bob.
Thank you. We're like Laurel and Hardy, but you're probably too young to remember who that is.
Yeah, I don't know who that is.
I digress. So one of the areas that I was talking about earlier that we focus on, environmental sustainability, and this is something that we look at, you know, when we're talking about our planning and zoning, and we talk about, you know, properties and our green spaces and the carts and paths and a lot of things that Justin was talking about a few seconds ago, protecting our green spaces. These are some things that we're going to, that we continually do, and these are things that are going to be approaching us quickly here. So Frank, raise your hand, because the second item on here is Lake Peachtree dredging. Frank is very intimately familiar with that. So at some point in the near future, we're going to get back into a situation where that lake needs to be dredged again because of the silt content that's in there. So right now, that's an unknown cost, and that's an unknown variable on how we're going to pay for that, but nonetheless, that does come back to that environmental sustainability, because that is a drinking water source for the water that we get here through the county. We have efforts to clean up the city, the green belt, downed and damaged trees, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we go forward, because we've had a couple of tornadoes that have come through the city, and they've done some damage to certain areas. You'll all probably know that the boardwalk is currently closed because we have some dangerous trees that are there, and we're working on the mitigation of that. But nonetheless, we continue to deal with the downed trees. We need to look at the current building standards and engineering standards as we move forward, and there's a lot of opportunities there to take advantage of these lead technologies, and a lot of that is currently built into the existing, the new building codes right now, but it can continue to improve, making your buildings more efficient, things along those lines, as far as your HVAC and your heating is concerned. We look at the solid waste and recycling. I know that's a big topic here for the city, but we have a market system right now, where we have multiple providers that you can choose from. Is that something that we wish to continue to do, or should we look for an overarching entity to take care of that for the city from that perspective? Understanding that there's a lot of things that go with that, but from a recycling perspective, just know that the commodities for recycling change almost daily. Sometimes that cardboard is really good, sometimes cardboard is not so good. So, you know, there's typically a cost associated with that, and to level set those expectations as far as getting rid of that commodity, China's not buying it like they used to before, so therefore, you know, that commodity can fluctuate in price. Emergency management, I touched on that a little bit ago. You know, we've, the first six months I got here, I thought I moved from the hurricane capital of the world to the tornado capital of the world. We had multiple tornadoes that hopped over Peachtree City, you know, causing some damage. I fielded multiple conversations from residents in regards to the railroad system that goes through here, and we've seen those in the news, the railway accidents and the chemicals that go through the city and go through those other areas. So from an emergency manager's perspective, that is on my radar to make sure that we have the capabilities. And we do have a first-class fire department to respond to that, but nonetheless, we still need to make sure that we're putting protective measures, and we're protecting our residents from those types of, those issues. And then we need to look to partner with our major partners that are here, such as Georgia Power, when it comes to electric car chargers, electric golf cart chargers at our facilities, and making those amenities available to the city. So then we talk about, and I'm sure council has heard me say this before, I know staff has, so I apologize for being repetitive. I always say, can we afford to own what we currently own? And I mean that by the facilities and by the amenities that the city has. So to give you an example, we have 74 city buildings to maintain with about half a million square feet of space. We have 29 tunnels, 36 bridges for paths, and 12 roadway bridges. So that all comes out of that, those taxes and paying for those repairs and maintenance on those, on your taxes come from that aspect. So some of the things that we look at from an operational sustainability perspective, and some of the critical areas that I'm looking at right now, as far as facilities are concerned, I have two roofs that need to be replaced at City Hall and Kedron at about $900,000 apiece. I'm looking at a price increase from $1.9 million to $3.7 million for an expansion on the back of the police department, as mentioned earlier, and a generator to function that building. We just got a price quote for Drake Field, everybody knows where that's at, but when it rains, what happens to that field? It's very slushy and muddy, and the mitigation aspect of fixing that field is about a half a million dollars to get that to where it drains appropriately, so we can use that field year-round. We have a pool bubble that has reached its life expectancy. We talked about having a year-round pool, but at some point, that pool bubble is going to need to be replaced, and all of the equipment that keeps that supported, it has reached its life expectancy. We got a quote about two years ago for a million and a half dollars, and as costs increases, you can factor in at least another, you know, 65% plus on top of that to replace the bubble. We have, we're sitting on about $1.9 million of lights replacement at the Mead Youth Fields. Well, I have some pictures in here that I'll show you later, but just understand that that field and that lighting system has reached its usable life, and the parts that are available for that are just not made anymore. So we have pieced it and parted it together for as long as we can, but at some point, in order to maintain operation of those fields in the evening, we're going to need to do something with the lights. I talked about the board rock issue. So we had the tornado came through, knocked a tree down on the boardwalk, did some damage. We fixed the damage on the boardwalk. However, as we went through and did some more investigation, we found out that there are 25 or 30 dangerous trees that are leaning and hanging that are causing an additional risk for anybody that's partaking in that boardwalk, so we had to close it down for safety reasons. That's a wetlands area, so to get in there and actually mitigate those trees and not just cut them down, is about a $200,000 expense for us to go in there and actually take care of that. And in the back, there's actually a fell tree that has done some more damage to the boardwalk that we're going to have to repair. We have a building here that, in the city hall, that has no elevator and it's two floors. The elevator replacement cost for that to put an elevator in here is $250,000. We have about $100,000 for the pressure cleaning and sealing of city hall. We have about $350,000 for the replacement of the Field of Hope. We have $325,000 for an HVAC system for the library. The list goes on and on as far as the items that are in the maintenance aspect that are some reaching critical mass to the point where we have to respond to those to get them operational from a facilities perspective. One of the key things for me is the aesthetics of the city. Looking at our curbs and medians and signs, our sidewalks, the city hall property, the facades of our buildings, the signage, the landscaping, so on and so forth, these are ongoing maintenance issues, but we have been behind for many years on a lot of these things, and the catch-up process sometimes is worse than actually, you know, sitting and watching things deteriorate. From an operational sustainability perspective, things that we're looking at, we have traffic issues in the city, I know everybody is surprised about that. We have some plans in the works for roundabouts and for hawk signals, which are the lighting mechanisms that allow golf carts to cross that great paths, flashing stop signs. I'm dealing with some internal staffing issues as far as having, you know, critical mass at some of my critical departments based on COVID. So COVID came through, and there was a reduction in force that was done. We lost about 24 people through a reduction in force in COVID in some critical areas. And through that process, until I got here, from when COVID happened, we've only regained about 10 or 11 of those people. And so I have critical departments in the city that are very low on staff, which causes delays in processing things, delays in hiring people. I have shortages in human resources, I have shortages in planning and zoning and city engineering, and those areas in which the public actually interfaces with us, and need something turned around rather quickly. And I'm put in a position to have to pull people out of other departments to kind of fill in, thus, you know, creating that continued process. We're looking at the ability to manage and direct current projects. So we have a lot of projects that are going on in the city, in addition to 40 new projects that came on with SPOLOST. SPOLOST has been a great thing for the city to provide a lot of opportunities for us to take advantage of, new facilities, new fire trucks, and things along those lines. But the operational aspects of those are something that we have to assume from a city perspective, because the buildings still need to be maintained, the fire trucks still need to be maintained, so on and so forth. And then working on a project portfolio with a prioritization that I and council will need to work on to make sure that we're identifying those critical areas to continue the city moving in the right direction. So let's take a look at some of the things that we have done so far from that uncompromised excellence that I started out this PowerPoint presentation with. Back in April of this year, we passed a significant employee benefits and compensation package that benefited about 70% of that to our public safety, which is fantastic. That put us in the 85th percentile and made us more marketable when it comes to getting the quality and qualified candidates to apply for positions in the city, and start filling some of those critical roles in our public safety. It also played, paid dividends back to our staff and our ability to retain the employees that we currently have, and to continue to give them opportunity to advance through that process. We've gotten some repetitive services moved around with that cleanup process, so for grounds had moved from recreation into public works where they're better served. And a pride and joy of mine is an increased public communications output. You have probably noticed that we have really increased our ability to reach the public through our social media channels and getting out in front of there. This presentation is a testament to their amazing work. In the last six months that I have been here, I have seen nothing but amazing things coming from three people in that organization who are doing all this work. So thank you, goes out to them for all of that, along with identifying capital needs, you know, for the city. So let's take a look at some of these projects that we worked on. This is a replacement of the Riley Field and Track. This project is $435,000. This is the all-children's playground, the price tag on all-children's playground was We did some resurfacing at the Pebble Pocket Tennis Courts, about $60,000 worth of work, and this is a, something that we need to do and keep up with every five to six years in order to maintain the integrity of those courts. We also done some new paving, this is at Glenlock, the parking lot, that was about a $91,000 project. This is a continued effort with our path paving, approximately $3.2 million a year, or 8.38 miles of path, on an average from 2017 to 2022, and we have about an average of $382,000 per mile of paving that the city actually does. So these are all of city employees that are doing this work. We got a new fire engine, Engine 82, council helped push this, although the engine, I think, did a lot of the work, but we did push this into the fire station. So this goes back to the testament Justin was talking about, about the amenities in the city of Peachtree City. We have the benefit of having this great equipment to take care of the resident here. We just recently went to council for a new coating on the hockey rink roof, that was an $83,000 project. I don't know how many folks actually have taken advantage of our disc golf that's next to city hall here, but we did an upgrade to that. It has been overwhelmingly popular and continues to be. We're actually renting discs for individuals that would like to play out of the library system, so if you have a library card, please go over there and get a disc so you can continue to play. But this is a brand-new course that we built, thanks to our rec department, and Kathy's sitting over here in the audience, this was a $25,000 project. You'll start seeing some signs popping up, this is a new sign design for us, as we start updating the amenities and keeping the consistency of signs through the city. We did some work at the Fred. Again, these are testament to the things that Justin was talking about, so we updated the lawn seating at the Fred. Going back to that conversation about our amazing public communications, we won three tele-awards recently for our ability to communicate, so, and communicate very well with our residents. So we won a tele-award for our What Is SPOLOST video, we won a tele-award for our Dear Santa, and we won a tele-award for Mondays with the Mayor. And we're going to continue to do that, and these are huge accolades for our communications department to be able to aspire to. So with every good, there's always a downside. So let's take a look at some of the things that we need to continue to do in order to maintain the integrity of Peachtree City. So one of those primary things is to identify a capital asset management system and to get all of our 74 buildings and all of our wrecks and all of our facilities into a program that is continue to tell me on a yearly basis how much money I need to spend or request in order to keep our facilities up to date. Same rules apply for our fleet maintenance program. We're going to increase our citizen engagement. We need to utilize some new committees and advisory groups, and that's reaching out to our citizens and having you help us make some decisions in some critical areas, such as paths, such as wreck and events and things along those lines. So there's going to be a lot of these things and opportunities rolling out for our citizens. I talked about the project portfolio and that operational aspect, and right now, we're out on the street for a request for proposal for a recreation master plan that is going to take a look at all of the recreation and events in the city, and it's going to help us make some long-term decisions as far as those benefits and amenities that we have. So I just want to call your attention to the top-right corner. I'm pretty sure that Mr. Cowell over there took my picture when I first got here, under a sign that looked very similar to this. This is what the front of city hall looks like. It may have been that picture, Cal. This is a facility inside the tennis center. So there's a roof issue at that location, and that water has caused significant amount of damage to us not actually be able to occupy that location at tennis center. This is an office, there was a water leak that was coming through the ground at the tennis center location, and this is an actual office space that exists there. This is the football building that's adjacent to that beautiful Riley Track operation that we just saw. So we spent a lot of money to put that track together, and the next iteration of that is going to be doing the striping, but when you pull into that parking lot, that's what you're going to be parking next to. This is inside that fire station where we pushed that brand-new fire truck in. So this is the conditions in which our firefighters are currently working and living. This is the insulation in the roof and in the walls. This is inside the bay of that fire station, and you'll notice firefighter's turnout gear is in there. So there's new requirements that are associated with the fire service as it comes to off-gassing and carcinogens from that equipment, and typically, that equipment is washed and laundered regularly to get all of those chemicals out of it. But unfortunately, any of that clean equipment is put back in that room, and that right next to it is a truck that would start up with a diesel engine, and then off-gas diesel fumes back into that equipment. This is some of our landscaping conditions at our parks amenities. This is what some of the fences look like that are around our ballparks. This is a seating area just outside that. These are the bleachers that are next to that, so you sit, this is where you would sit to watch your kids play. Again, this is the mulch area under the bleachers. That's the lighting box that I was mentioning at Mead Field, so the equipment that's in that lighting box is antiquated, and basically, right now, we're scrambling to find parts to keep that up and operational, about a $2 million project that exists right there. This is the driveway into Mead Field, anybody that's gone down there, that's a dirt road, and this is after a rainy day, and that continued flooding causes a washout of those mulch areas. And then it creates that fast-moving creek of water that finds its own path, but then ultimately, that washes into those landscape areas. Again, another fencing issue. This, a picture on the right is, you know, our fix, our temporary fix for running out of space at the fire station. So in that room right there, we've had to put up temporary structures in order to, you know, house additional equipment and house additional equipment and gear for our firefighters and our medians. This is some of our playground equipment. These are the pictures from the boardwalk and the damage that happened to the boardwalk. This is a city sign that needs to be obviously refurbished. And then the picture on the right is a, I'll say this for Hannah, she's not here, but this is an egregious gap at the Rubicon top lot. So that's actually worn and weathered away underneath the top lot. Just some more conditions of the medians and our, these are inside our parks, our pathway tunnels. This is at the Field of Hope. So this is an ADA accessible baseball field. And as you can see there, that field itself is a turf field. And what's happening here is the seams are actually pulling apart on that field that are going to need to be repaired. This is the pool bubble that I talked about. So again, the pool bubble is at its end-of-life expectancy, and the equipment that's used to keep that inflated, not including about a week in advance of this being put up and a week after it being taken down, requires both public works and park recreation staff to actually assemble this, put it up, take it down, and then store it. But the condition that pool bubble is in disrepair, and it's going to need to be replaced very near future. So I'd just like to give a quick recap of where we're going to be going next. We have a budget calendar in front of us here. So we have a council workshop to review the city manager's proposed budget on June 20th, which is a Tuesday. On Thursday, June 13th, we're going to have a public hearing on the proposed budget and the capital improvement program at a regular council meeting, and that's on Thursday. And then we'll have an adoption of the operating budget and the capital improvement plan Thursday, August 3rd. And Mayor and council staff is here for any questions or comments that you may have.
Can I start, Frank?
No, I would just tell you that after as many years in the Air Force as a civil engineer, the maintenance plan has been, the maintenance plan has been a big concern of mine. I've talked to you, I think, almost since the first day I met you. You know, trying to keep the city and its facilities up to standards is very, very difficult. And you've identified these almost from the beginning as you've drawn through the city, and I commend you for doing that, because it's going to be a very, very difficult. We're just not going to have the money to do everything. And not only do we do everything, but then you add all the SPOLOST projects to it, and it's just a continuous project, program of trying to maintain everything we own and to keep it up to the Peachtree City standards that all of us expect. So you've got a challenge ahead of you, and I wish you well.
Thank you.
All I can say to you, Bob, is that it was an excellent presentation. It made me wince many times as I saw some of those pictures up there. You have a Herculean task in front of you. And I think that I'm glad we have you to do this. We need that kind of leadership. So I appreciate that.
Thank you. I have an amazing staff, so I can't do it all by myself. So the testament to my people.
It does require the good leader.
Thank you.
So all the pictures we saw, I encourage anybody out here and tell all your friends, pick a park, pick any park. Go out there and take a good look at it, and you'll be, you'll be surprised, and I want to say disappointed, in how it looks. And we've let things, over the years, creep up on us and creep up on us and creep up on us. And we address them, which I know you guys did a facilities bond and got a lot of them, but that maintenance just keeps coming and coming. And I think as a, as a city, I think, I think we want to be a first-class kind of city, not a, not a, oh, wow, it's rundown. I, I look at it like, I look at the city, I hate to say it, like my garage, you know, like, ah, I'll put this here. Next thing you know, it's piled up, and it's almost overwhelming. And I appreciate you looking at the fact that we need to come up with a maintenance plan throughout the city and that we're going to get on the road. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, if I could, I would go back to the financial side of this thing. And we hear every day on whether you're looking at Mr. Beverly's newspaper or online newspaper or social media, that people are, there are folks out there screaming and hollering, you've got a 50% reserve and you need to cut taxes. You need to cut taxes. Well, we just saw what would happen if we start reducing this thing. And the last part of that that Bob showed was $4.2 million. And you know, the year before that, it was like $3 million, then it $2 million before that. And sooner or later, if you cut that, or you start cutting your property taxes that we have control over, we have nothing, because now we would be down below that 30% or whatever it is before the state takes over. And we've got cash on hand, and we can pay for a lot of stuff. And we're in a lot better shape than those last slides showed. But we have a lot of work to do, and we have some very hard decisions to make. And, you know, and it's going to cost some money to do that.
I think at the end of the day, that this budget should reflect who we want to be as a city. You know, do we take pride when we look around at our facilities and our buildings? And I think we have, obviously, Bob's come in with new set of eyes and 30 years of experience, and I think it looks like he's been here a lot longer than six months. But after only six months, I suddenly feel like we might have a new lease on life here, that we can really start turning things around, and I'm very excited about that. You know, all the things that we saw, we still haven't even talked about. Last year, when we did the SPOLOST conversation, we talked about Battery Way Park. You know, it was important to our citizens to know that we were going to upgrade that park. And, you know, we don't see big capital improvements here. We see what's necessary in order to run our city. Also, if we put off any necessary expenditures now, we're going to pay a whole lot more later. I think that's something important to keep in mind. So we'll have to keep our eyes on the prize, uncompromised excellence. If that's really what we want, and that is what we all decided as an executive leadership team, then I think we're going to have to keep that in mind when we, when we approve a budget here in the next few weeks. And that's all I have.
That's it for us as well, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. We stand adjourned.